Good evening. I hereby call the regular meeting of the Madera City Council to order at six o'clock PM. The council chamber will be open to the public. Meeting will be also available for the public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live streamed meeting on city's website, Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833. Comments will also be accepted via email at the citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov. Once again, citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West Fourth Street, Madera, California. Would you give us a roll call, please, city clerk?
Mayor Garcia is absent. Mayor Pro Tem Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Gallegos?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Montes?
Here.
Councilmember Mejia?
Here.
And Councilmember Vegas?
Yes, here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we will have the invocation by Brother Jesse Chavez from the Well Church. May we have everyone, please stand and remain standing also.
We pray first?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jesse Chavez. I represent the Well Church of Madera and the Madera Rescue Mission. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for this opportunity to pray for this meeting. Dear wise and loving God, first, let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. Help us to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom we have in this country. Thank you for loving us even so from boundless and gracious nature. You have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Grant that our mayor and the city council have ears to listen to the people they serve and wisdom to act for justice. Grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Grant them a sense of welfare and true needs of our people. Grant them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness. Grant them confidence in what is good and fitting. Grant them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Madera. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Councilmember Vegas, please.
Please salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America.
Thank you very much, everyone. I ask my colleagues if there's any changes to the agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem, we do have a item that staff has requested to pull.
Yes, B10.
I would move that we approve the agendas presented and pulling item E1 for a future, uh, future meeting.
E1, okay.
I'm sorry, I take that back. I apologize for that. That is item D1. D1, thank you.
D1, okay.
Was that something that wanted to be pulled? I think it looked, looks like I might have an update on that.
Yes, just an update.
Was it an update? I thought you wanted to?
No.
Yes, for, so item D1, the contract extension discussion with Mid Valley. That report is going to be presented at the next council meeting and the staff report simply states that this item will not be presented this evening. Rather, it'll be at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you very much.
So then with that, Mayor Pro Tem, I will move to approve the agenda, removing item D1 for a future meeting.
Okay, excuse me. I have one more announcement. Please forgive me. Item B10 to be moved for future dates as well? B10.
Okay, so with that, I'll rescind my motion and I'll amend that motion and I'll make the motion that we adopt the agenda, removing item B10 and D1 for a future agenda meeting.
I second that motion.
Great. City clerk, would you please call roll?
Mayor Pro Tem, we don't have anyone on Zoom as far as council, so we don't necessarily need to do roll call unless you wish to.
No, that's fine. So we can go with all in favor?
Mayor Garcia is absent, so. There's no attendees?
Okay, there's no attendance.
We do roll call when there's somebody, one of us.
Right. If it's a live stream, you mean?
We could do roll call. Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia is absent. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so very much. The first fifteen minutes are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and the state subject of their contents. Comments, excuse me. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until the item is called. Comments on the items listed on the public hearing of the agenda should be held until the hearing is open. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. No adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to the public comment at this time. There are no written communications. Do we have anything?
For written public comment, I have received a couple of emails. The first one is from DJ Becker. Greetings, Mayor and members of the city council. Many of you likely noticed that again this Fourth of July, Madera was plagued with many illegal, extremely loud, and dangerous aerial mortars and airburst fireworks. This is because our outdated ineffective ordinance requires that a police officer actually see a resident using the fireworks to be able to issue a citation. To avoid being seen by police residents, simply set off large illegal fireworks from behind fences or from backyards. To address their huge illegal fireworks problem, Fresno updated their ordinance this year to be able to issue citations to the property owner or tenant where the fireworks originated from. A much simpler and more effective process. Their fines reportedly started at $2,000. Over the weekend, Fresno also lost three homes to fires attributed to fireworks. With one of the fires resulting in the death of a seven-year-old boy, according to reports. Cities that are proactive and update their ordinances increase the quality of life for residents and reduce cost and problems, whether it is animal ordinances, fireworks, homelessness, or panhandling. Residents would like to be out enjoying their neighborhoods on the evening of Fourth of July without worrying about frightened children or panicked animals or their trees or properties catching on fire or a mortar or rocket being misfired and coming down in their yards. Surely, we don't have to lose another home to a preventable fire because of outdated ordinances. Let's be proactive instead of reactive. As a city council, you can direct and begin the process. Please review and update Madera's essential ordinances as soon as possible. Thank you, DJ Becker.
Thank you very much.
The next public comment is from Cynthia Ordagon and is regarding Dan Foss. I want to thank Dan Foss for his dedication to the people of Madera. His work with Public Works made the city more barrier-free for all citizens. His sidewalks program on the east side of the city helped many other city departments fulfill their obligations to make Maderans feel safe and elevated many hazard in our neighborhoods. I wish him well on his new journey. I hope the city will continue the sidewalk program he created with the help of staff and the CDDG funding. Just one more. And this is from Carmina Rodriguez. Dear Mayor Garcia and council members, I recently started volunteering at the Central California Blood Center in Fresno. After learning more about the donor process, I realized how fast and easy it was. One pint of blood can save up to three lives and assist many in need in our valley. Donating blood is a genuine service to our community, making one feel humble and grateful. Our nearest blood center is in Fresno, which can be difficult for many to drive to. Fortunately, the CCBC mobile centers, center comes to Madera every eight weeks. However, after speaking to the nurses at the center, I learned that Madera has a low donor turnout. The CCBC spreads the word on social media and relies on organizations and government officials such as law enforcement to host blood drives. Very few of our residents turn out to donate blood, partly due to lack of information. Madera has a large population of Spanish speakers who are unaware of the donor process or have knowledge of blood donations. I believe more can be done with your help. I request that our citizens be informed about the importance of blood donations and future mobile blood drives. The City of Madera newsletter reaches all residents in our community more than any other outlet, including our Spanish-speaking population. We can all benefit from blood donations because they can help save lives in our community, increase donor turnout, and encourage citizen engagement. I hope I can count on your support. Thank you for your strong leadership and commitment to the city of Madera. Sincerely, Carmina Rodriguez. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make public comment?
Mayor Pro Tem, council, good evening. Chief Watson, I just want to give you a quick update on, on the river. In addition to the MID crews, the city Public Works crews, Parks crews, and City Fire crews, Cal Fire firefighter hand crews were recently in the river and did about 680 hours worth of work. So I want to thank Public Works for their support with providing the restrooms, Parks for chipping the branches that we were limbed up, and Station 58 for providing the logistical needs for those crews. Fourth of July was talked about, but a very busy night for City Fire. There was 52 total incidents within the city of Madera. City Fire responded to the 24 fires in the city. Madera County Fire responded to 12 fires in the city for a total of 36. There was 14 additional calls for service and the city responded to the county for three additional fires. So it was a quite busy night. Crews were just bouncing from call to call and there was times of service that we weren't able to respond to the number of emergencies coming in with the lack of fire resources. We did staff two additional city engines in the city for that night and it still was not enough to keep up. But with the help of the county and then the city helping the county back, we were able to cover all those fire fires pretty closely. Madera PD, they had 20 additional officers on duty and they made 21 arrests or were given citations out. So it was quite busy for both of us. We didn't stick around and were even to shake hands as we left PD was rolling in and we were able to handle all those incidents, but just thank you and just want to give you a quick update on the Fourth of July.
Well, thank you very much. There was a lot going on that night and for everyone that was out there, I commend you for your service. Thank you so very much to each and every one of you. And now we have the river presentation by our city manager, Arnaldo.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem Evans, members of the council, Arnaldo Rodriguez. This is a brief update on the Fresno River cleanup. As Chief Watson indicated a few minutes ago, we, we have continued to work diligently. I believe we're going on six weeks now on, on the Fresno River cleanup. The Fresno River has been a challenge going back a number of years in terms of roles and responsibilities. And I think the past six weeks have shown what an exceptional job not only the city has done, Cal Fire, and then also our partners, specifically the Irrigation District, who's actually here in attendance tonight. We have Tommy Gracie, the executive director of the Irrigation District. Council may recall about six weeks ago, there was a horrific fire here in the city. Unfortunately, we lost two homes. The next day, I actually reached out to Tommy, if memory serves me, it was either, yeah, I'm pretty confident it was the next day or it was two days later where I reached out to Tommy and said, Tommy, I, I have a grand plan. I'm not too sure if it's going to work, but I can really use your help. And Tommy did not hesitate. He said, whatever you guys need, we're there to help you guys out. And, and, and true to his word, they have provided an enormous amount of resources to assist the city in that river cleanup. His operators are exceptional. They, they, they've provided two mowers, an excavator, and a D6. And they've also had support staff. That's in addition to the city staff that's been down there. We've had code enforcement down there daily. We've had our police officers down there daily. We've had animal control. We've had some situations where there's either stray animals or people have pets. We've had our Cal Fire crews. We've had both, can the engine crews and then we've also, can Chief Watson had alluded to. We've had a number of hand crews. We've had a couple of control fires. We've had the entire time, we've had our Public Works crews and we've had our Parks crews down there. It's, it's been a lot of work. It's not the sexiest of work. It's, it's a lot of elbow grease and a lot of backbreaking work. And on top of that, we've had our contractor down there collecting trash. I don't know what the most recent number in tonnage is, but I can tell you it's a lot. And I think last time we checked, I'm gonna look over to Dan, maybe north of 170 tons. That's 170. 170 tons. And, and to give some context to that, one ton is 2,000 pounds of trash. So it's, it's a lot of trash. And it's not just trash, it's appliances and mattresses and all kinds of random stuff we find down there. But we could not have done it without the assistance of Tommy and his team and all, and all of the hard work by the city crews. And again, it hasn't been one single person in the city that can say, you know what, this was me. It was truly a team effort. And so again, so with that, I just want to thank Tommy who's here tonight. I wanted, I'm extremely grateful for the partnership and on top of that, for all of the hard work by our city staff that's been working down there. As we know, the weather's been warming up and at once, as our city staff said, you know what, I don't want to do that. Literally everyone has stepped up. Actually, we've even had one of our tractor operators was one of, can one of our employees at the wastewater treatment plant. So again, it's truly been a team effort by everyone in the city. So with that, Tommy, thank you very much. I'm not just sure if you'd like to say a word without putting you on the spot, but come on up.
Tommy Gracie, General Manager, Madera Irrigation District. I just want to echo what Arnaldo's already said in that the partnership we developed with the city of Madera has been great. You've seen the results of that from all the way from the golf course base in connection that we've been discussing for 10 years that we got done recently. To law enforcement coming, helping us with catalytic converters, they've been hitting us on a regular basis and arresting them and getting, you know, and letting the word out that we're watching. That was great. All the way to this project, which is multi-benefit. Everybody in our community is going to appreciate that and make it a safer place, a cleaner place. So yeah, city staff and our staff work well together, but our team, our operators, our staff that are actually doing the work, they're the hard work. I just authorized them to get out there and get to work. So appreciate all of their efforts. Charles Contreras, our operations manager, he's really leading the show out there along with his intermediate supervisors. They did a lot of work and our, our team's back running water now, which is good to get water in our community too. So we're out of there. We're not able to assist at this moment because our equipment's doing other work. But we're always happy to help and we look forward to the next project with city. And thanks to Arnaldo for the leadership, pretty amazing what he was able to get accomplished in a couple of days to allow us to get that work done instead of just talking about it. So Arnaldo, good job on that and we look forward to next project with city Madera.
Very good. Thank you so very much. I'd like to echo each and every comment that was made before we begin our presentations. The Fresno River is my backyard and I can attribute to everything that's been said. I have been out there at two o'clock in the morning with the water holes because the trees have been so high. And PD walks up and says, Councilwoman, are you okay? And I'm, hey, I'm outside in a gown, just spraying water. So from two years ago to now, I commend each and every one of you because it hasn't been easy. I raised Cain about it. Poor Arnaldo, the chief, both chiefs have heard me. So today, the fruits of our labor is let's give some recognition. So thank you very much. Excuse me. Come on with it. Councilwoman Gallegos?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Evans. I would just like to ask Mr. Gracie if he could go back to your board and thank them for all their cooperation in this movement to make this river safe for our community. We appreciate all their support. On behalf of all my colleagues here.
Is this popcorn or what?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
I too wanted to thank all staff and this is from, this is on behalf of the residents of Madera. You know how many times I get pulled over, I get stopped and people will tell me, hey, you guys are doing a great job. Thank you. And when they say thank you to me, I know they mean thank you to the staff and the people that have put the work. I know the efforts in cleaning the, the river have, have a long history. So I don't want to forget anyone that's been part of this. Even our counterparts here at the county have certainly contributed to some of the cleanup. I hope that this is a partnership not only with MID but also the county that we can continue and we can do this on an annual or every two years how it was done in the past and continue to clean up our river because you'd be surprised how many more folks are actually walking the trails and feel safe. And that's thanks to you. When they tell me thanks, I wasn't out there shoveling, but I know you and your staff are and I want to make sure that, that you guys know how appreciative the residents are of your efforts of making this a better place for them and a safer place, by the way. So thank you all.
Before I popcorn again.
I think we all want to get on the thank you fest and thank you to all staff and everybody. I too have been approached by a lot of people saying thank you. And again, it isn't us. We're, we're giving direction, but it's everybody out there that's, that's doing the actual work. The community is very, very appreciative of what you're doing and just keep up the good work. Thank you.
Councilmember Vegas? You have something to say? You?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for Cal Fire Police Department. Everybody was involved. I can see the river. The river looked pretty nice, pretty good. And that's good for everybody. So thank you all for the hard work. Thank you.
Anyone else? Maybe before we start the festivities? Michael pop up again now. Okay. So when we call, when I call your name, would you please come back? And my colleagues, would you guys assist in helping to present these because this is a team effort and there's no I in team. So each and every one of you, thank you ahead of time. And here we go. Let's have a party. I want you to assist. It's just, this isn't just me by myself. I'm not Madera. I'm just a small part of Madera.
Mayor Pro Tem, I think only Mr. Gracie's here from MID. Is that what you're sure?
Yes, we have MID first. Mr. Gracie? That, huh? I think so. Okay. Okay, from the city of Madera, the city council certificate of recognition presented to Madera Irrigation District in recognition of your partnership with the city of Madera exemplary contributions to the Fresno River Cleanup Project presented this sixth day of July 2022, Santos Garcia, Mayor, City of Madera. Thank you so very much.
Appreciate the recognition though.
Yes, we have you to stand. Okay, we'll have everyone at one time. So just hang tight. Look, I'm new with this, okay? Okay, here we go. Next. Let me tell you, this, this young man right here. Pick me up at Station 56. Put me in the dune buggy and oh my goodness, I had a maximum overdrive ball. This is for Cal Fire and Chief Watson. From the city of Madera, city council certificate of recognition presented to Cal Fire, City of Madera, in recognition of your exemplary contribution to the city for the fire, for the, excuse me, for the Fresno River Cleanup Project presented this sixth day of July 2022, Santos Garcia, Mayor, City of Madera. No, I think I said it enough. Now this one right here. Look, I'm not very formal, so please forgive me, you guys, but they put me up here. So here we go. This gentleman, I call him whenever there's a problem and there's been many problems. Chief Dino Lawson, please come. City of Madera, city council certificate of recognition presented to Madera Police Department slash Dino Lawson. City of Madera in recognition of your exemplary contributions to the fire, excuse me, the Fresno River Cleanup Project presented this sixth day of July 2022, Santos Garcia, Mayor, City of Madera.
Oh, yeah, always.
Oh goodness, okay.
I've never found a mic I didn't like. So what, what, one of the backstories to all of this and all the hard work and, and Dan and his, his people at Public Works and Dan, Dan, which I'll go into later when I come up. But one of the backstories here that was alluded to, it's partnerships. Everything you achieve so much when you create partnerships. And one of the things, MID was down in that river every day, just helping the city out, busting their shops, equipment, everything. And our officers and code enforcement were down there in that river. And as it was alluded to, there was a call that went out that our dispatch center received of alarms going off at their plant, their yard, which is in the county. And the response would be the sheriff's department. However, the sheriff's department's response was going to take too long. Our night shift watch commander heard it and said, hey, that's MID. They helped us out in the river. We're going, guys. And he rallied the whole team and they went out there and arrested three people, recovered the stolen property, which they, they didn't have to do. It was just through partnerships and friendships that they said, we're going out there. And, and, and these are things that blossom when you do things like this. So I just wanted to mention. So I just wanted to mention, uh, that little side note and we, you, you don't know how much we appreciate uh, what M I D has done for the city and the county's help also.
Thank you very much. Oh, you already knew you've had another award coming. The city of Madera. City Council Certificate of Recognition presented to Code Enforcement. Madera Police Department in recognition of your exemplary contribution to the Fresno River Cleanup Project. Presented this sixth day of July twenty-two Santos Garcia Mayor, City of Madera. Okay, all right, all right, okay. And you have another one?
I supervise a lot.
I see. Animal control. Let me tell you guys, animal control. Not only there are their dogs in animal control, they're possums. And with all the stuff being removed, I don't have to worry about a possum coming in my doggy door now. So anyway, city of Madera, city council certificate of recognition presented to animal control. Madera Police Department in recognition for your exemplary contribution to the Fresno River Cleanup Project. You guys see I said it all the way through. Presented this sixth day of July twenty twenty-two Santos Garcia Mayor, City of Madera.
I, I will say on, on this one, I will, um, the, in, in, I'm very proud to, um, be able to receive this for animal control, but, uh, I would be remiss if I didn't. The, the, the true thing to this, um, is DJ. She's the one that put the animals, specifically dogs on, on our radar down in the river. Uh, and actually got us. So when we, um, came up with a game plan on this, we included animal control right away because of the dogs, um, and, and other animals that were in the river. So thank you for educating me on that.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. I want to kind of shift something around just a smidgen. We have public works, we have fleet. So I want to call for parks instead. Okay. Hey, Joe.
Hi.
Doing there, guy. Okay, we have certificate of Madera, excuse me, city of Madera. City Council Certificate of Recognition presented to Parks and Community Services. City of Madera in recognition of your exemplary contribution to the Fresno River Cleanup Project. Presented this sixth day of July twenty twenty-two Santos Garcia Mayor, City of Madera. Is there anyone here to receive this for you?
So Joe is online, but since we have such a good partnership in the city, Chief Lawson will accept her on behalf of Joe.
Absolutely.
I want to thank Joe and the academy for this.
The engineering department and Keith Helman. Certificate of Madera, excuse me, city of, I'll get it right, you guys, just bear with me. City Madera, city council certificate of recognition presented to engineering department. City of Madera in recognition of your exemplary contribution to the Fresno River Cleanup Project presented this sixth day of July twenty twenty-two Santos Garcia Mayor, City of Madera. Okay, now what partner is going to pick this up?
I can, I can, I can go ahead and, uh, um, say what I'd like to say. We very much appreciate the, uh, certificate and, uh, we, we played a minor part, but we're, 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 uh, we're very, um, we're very happy to participate in any way that we could.
Thank you very much. Thank you so very, very much. And the man of the hour. Mr. Dan Foss. He had an luncheon today. I didn't get to come on time. But this man here is a diamond, not only in the rough, but in the, in the good, the bad and the ugly. So. City of Madera, city council certificate of recognition presented to Fleet Department. City of Madera in recognition of your exemplary contribution to the Fresno River Cleanup Project. Presented this day. The sixth of July twenty twenty-two Santos Garcia Mayor, City of Madera. The city of Madera, city council certificate of recognition presented to Public Works Department. City of Madera in recognition and exemplary contribution to the Fresno River Cleanup Project. Presented this sixth day of July twenty twenty-two Santos Garcia Mayor, City of Madera. I'm going to miss you. Thank you.
So first, um, for the fleet, I do have to recognize Randy Collin. Randy, um, he runs fleet pretty much by himself and we were really taxing him on this one. Like, as we kept asking for more and more equipment and he kept saying, that stuff's not made for that sand in that river. And I said, well, what happens if we take it down in that sand in that river? And he said, it's going to create a lot of work. And I said, okay, I guess we're taking it down into the sand in the river. And every time, uh, he made sure it was fixed and ready to go as quick as humanly possible, which I don't know how he did it, but he did it. So I do want to recognize him for, for the public works department, you know? I say this a lot and I am more than honored to be up here and accept this. But I was not the one working down there when it was a hundred and ten degrees and I was not the one that was with the hand tools and as, as the city manager had said, um, just putting a lot of sweat and tears into the river. I mean, I was the guy that was walking down there and saying, hey, can we get this too? I feel bad doing it. And every time they would say, yeah, no problem. And they would tackle it. I'm here to accept this, but really this belongs to all the workers that are out there every day just doing the, I mean, I would walk across the river and sometimes think, how are they doing this? It's a, I can't walk to my car. I'm going to have to call an Uber. And they're down there just busting their tails to get it done and it looks amazing. Um, and it looks so good. I would say that six weeks ago, when we started this endeavor, I would have said, I was one of those saying like, there's no way we can get it spotless as it is. I think that the, the project, um, and then I get Arnold who has a lot to do with that. He would say, no, we could do it. And I went, okay, but I did not think it was feasible, but I think it's, I mean, the results are outstanding. And again, happy to accept it, um, but the workers deserve all the glory on it. So thank you.
We have one last presentation. As I said, the man of the hour. Dan too received a lot of calls. I'm sure not only from me, I'm sure from each and every one of us that are here. And there hasn't been a time that I can say that he wasn't there for me. So I, I commend you. I thank you so much. The city of Madera. City Council Certificate of Recognition presented to Daniel Foss. Lieutenant. And Public Works Director. In recognition of your and exemplary contribution, service and leadership to the city of Madera. Presented this sixth day of July twenty twenty-two Santos Garcia Mayor, City of Madera.
So I'd like to say just a couple of words for this. Um, you know, I don't know how you wrap it up, a couple of words in two decades, but I've been here about, uh, twenty years now. And I've been with Public Works for two years, two of those. Um, I'll never forget how I went over to Public Works. I, I seldom calling sick. I think I have seven hundred and something hours of sick time, but right when COVID was starting to kick off, um, I had a stomach bug and so I called in sick and then they said, don't come back because they didn't know what it was. So I was like, all right, well, I guess I'll take a couple of days off. And then the first day I called him back, uh, the city manager said, hey, you're going to public works. I was like, man, I really should not have called in sick that day. I don't know what happened. I don't know what this means, but here we go. Uh, initially, I will say, and I've thanked most of staff for this. I was glad for the challenge. I mean, I'm always up for that. I love doing that. Um, but it was a lot. It was something very different and very unique for me to go from law enforcement for sixteen, seventeen years over to public works. I've loved it. I, I won't say, I won't lie and say I loved it the first couple of months, but I've grown to love it. And the great thing about it now is I really feel like I have two families, the public works and the police department. And it's just been a pleasure and an honor and a thrill to work for so many people in the city of Madera. I mean, in the public works, it's in good hands. You could see we've got one here on, on Zoom with us who will be turning it over to, and I have full confidence he's going to do a great job. As I mentioned, for the river cleanup. One of the things that I, I know we don't forget, but I have to just give all credit to the workers. And it, it's actually two part. I think it's all the credit to the workers and the citizens of Madera. I think one of the reasons we always succeed is people care. And if you can get people to care, then things get done. And I, at Public Works, uh, the employees really, really cared about the city and about everything that's going on. And they understood that they had appreciation for that from the community because the community cared. And then you start seeing projects getting done. And, um, I think we made a lot of progress there. My, my main family with the police department. I've always felt like our officers can go toe to toe with anybody, um, in the state. And, and no offense, sir, but they just beat the, the tar out of the county deputies. We're just way better. I'm sorry. But we are, I think, the premium law enforcement that I've ever had the pleasure of working with. And again, it goes back to me that they care. When they're out there dealing with the community, you see it every day. They, they care about this community. They care to make it better. And, uh, I, I have loved working for this city for so long. I'm not, I'm honored to be going to my next agency. I'm excited about it. But I was telling some people, a couple of weeks ago, I was telling my wife and a little bit of a panic attack, what have I done? What am I doing? Why am I leaving? I love it. Um, but this is just, you know, I have a great opportunity to be a chief for my own agency and I, I felt like that's something that I want to tackle at this time. So thank you for this. I really appreciate it. Madera will always be with me. My, I will be coming back and forth, so I'll be coming through town and I hope to run into you guys as much as possible in the, in the future. So thank you, everybody. Thank you for this time and, and thank you for twenty great years.
Councilwoman Giegus, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'd like to take this opportunity just to share a quick story about Lieutenant Foss. It's a bittersweet day today. Today I was sworn in six years ago on this actual date. And this will be the day that I'm saying goodbye to, um, a sergeant at the time, the second week I was sworn in. I did a ride along with Sergeant Foss at the time and opened my eyes to a lot of special programs that he had created, which was the Olive Foundation. That him and his wife had put together baggies from their own money to help the women that are on the streets to take them off and do better things. And I was just so amazed that this officer came up with this great program and was supported by, at the time, his commander, Dino Lawson. So I just saw so much in the years of his growth as a professional, just getting better and stronger. His leadership and his mentoring in our police department has shown greatly. And I'd like to thank his wife especially for allowing you to be a part of our community here in the city of Madera. When Dan got hired in the city, he kind of thought, oh, I'm going to be here for a few years, but fell in love with our community and this city and has stayed twenty plus years. I also want to thank him especially for getting involved and investing in our service clubs in the city of Madera with all our residents and all the projects that you've been involved in there. So from the bottom of my heart, Dan, you'll be truly missed and, um, safe travels. God bless you.
Anyone else?
Just want to say, um, thank you for all your service, Dan, and in every capacity. We really sad to see you go, um, but we wish you nothing but the best. And, uh, well, I'm sure we'll see each other around and thank you for everything you've done, not just in for the city, but even in the community at large. So thank you very much. We, we really are going to miss you.
Anyone else?
So Dan, I just want to publicly thank you for all of your hard work. The when I got here, we had some challenges in public works, uh, as councils aware and, um, when COVID first started, Dan was absolutely correct. Uh, we had an interim public works director who was traveling back and forth from San Diego. And when COVID started, um, I he decided that that situation was probably not a good one for him to do. So as I sat down, I was looking at the organization, I was looking for someone who can provide leadership to the organization. And, and that's when I, I, I called the chief up and I told him my crazy idea to, to put a police officer over public works. And I said, well, don't, you know, you know, can just think about it for a day or two. He thought, and, and then next day I called him up. I said, you know what, what, I said, I'm going to do this. I says, Dan, in the office today. He said, yeah, it was a Friday. I said, come over right after lunch. He said, you're going to do this? He said, does counsel know? I said, no, I'll tell him after the fact. They'll be okay. And, and a few people probably thought, you know, that I was a little off my rocker, but the thing about leadership is that, um, can some people are really good at it? And they gravitate towards it and they become excellent leaders. There's other people that, that, that like the concept, but doing it's a little bit more difficult. And one of the things that Dan, Dan stepped into that role and he's done just a phenomenal job. To a lot of people, Dan's, this is the third time Dan's going to hear me say this. A lot of people know Dan as a police officer. In my time here, I mostly know him as a public works director. Dan's done, uh, just a phenomenal job in public works. He really cares about the community. Dan's always accessible. Dan understands how to prioritize projects when people call them with a water leak or a sewer leak or anything else. Dan, Dan understands, he also understands the benefit of, of community aesthetics. Dan and I can were the two that came up with the saving clean team with the goal of beautifying the city. And we identified certain things that we said, you know what, if we can have addition by subtraction, the community will become a, a, a more aesthetically pleasing place. And hopefully we can instill some civic pride. Um, and, and that's exactly what we've been doing. We've been building the plaintiffs. We've been building the planes, reflying it. We don't always have the greatest plan, but we have concepts and we try to execute them. And sometimes they work and sometimes they don't. But the one thing that we're not afraid, you know, Dan has never been afraid of fail. And that's what makes him a great leader. Um, I think that Public Works is in a much better position today than it was when Dan took over. And and the simple evidence that we have Jamie Hickman on the call tonight, and Jamie is going to be stepping into the Public Works role. And then we have Javier Valdez, who's going to be stepping into Jamie's role. And 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 two and a half years ago, I probably wouldn't have done that. But but you know, with Dan's leadership, he's been able to build up the team. He's made some transformational changes over there. I think the organization is much better off. So thank you again, Dan. Um, this is the third speech I've said about Dan in five days. But publicly, I just want to thank Dan for all of your hard work and at best, um, you know, I just wish you the best. I understand why Dan's doing it. Being a police chief doesn't come, you know, very often. And you know, it's an exciting time. Um, I wish Dan wasn't leaving, but I understand why he's doing it. So best of luck, Dan. Don't be a stranger. Thank you.
Yes.
So Mayor Protem, Council, on behalf of myself and the PD, uh, for 20 great years, Dan, you've served this community with one of the biggest hearts. You you know, you just, and I've said this many, many times, you're you 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 are just phenomenal. You saw an issue um, way before everybody else did across this country uh, with human trafficking and you did something about it. You created the Olive Program. And it's blossomed into, we have um, a home for them now. You know, you're 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 right up there. You brought us right up there with Fresno and with services. And and it just started from from Working Patrol. Uh, and you saw uh, this little girl that needed help. And and that just is a testament to the individual that you are, the officer and the big heart that you have. Uh, we've been talking a lot about the river and and received awards for this. But even before we went on that endeavor, you reached out to the county and uh, created a partnership with the county uh, with the Board of Supervisors and the City Council and Arnaldo before we even uh, addressed what we did now uh, and started cleaning up the river. You you just have a vision. And uh, for the 20 years, um, a lot of you don't know this, but everywhere that I went, whether it was a patrol sergeant, detective sergeant, uh, Dan went with me. I always made sure that I had Dan with me. Just because he's an outstanding individual, a great leader. You you would be very hard pressed to find anyone at the PD that would have an ill word to say about Dan. Uh, they love him. They love his leadership. Uh, he's the only guy I know that could discipline someone, give him days off, and they bring him gifts the next day. It's it's a gift that that only he has, but but that's just the kind of individual that he is. Let alone um, I consider you one of my best friends. Uh, and this is kind of a bittersweet um, thing for me and the city uh, and this community that you serve. We're we're losing a great one. But Nevada City is going to get an outstanding Chief of Police. And I couldn't be more happy and proud of you and what you've accomplished and what you're going to accomplish in the future. So on behalf of the Madera Police Department, all the employees there and the citizens of this community, thank you for 20 years of dedication, hard work and love. And good luck on your future endeavor in Nevada City.
Thank you, everybody.
Anyone else? This is not a typical, there you go.
I never met a Mike I didn't like either, uh, chief. Brett Fraser, Madera County Board of Supervisors. Uh, I was lucky enough to uh, meet Dan about 13 years ago. And um, we became quick friends and it was because of everything that was just said up here. Uh, this is a a leader. He leads with his heart. Um, he always had a care for uh, for the citizens and um, and um, when I heard that you were leaving it, I I was like, it should have been probably four or five years ago, you know, you were you were ready to be a chief the day I met you, um, just seeing the way that you carried yourself and your professionalism and your ability to adapt and take on literally anything that was thrown at you. And um, you know, it's a testament just outside of Madera. I'll be talking to uh, members of the Boards of Supervisors, different council members and other. And they all seem to know Dan Foss, and I think it's through the Olive Foundation and um, but that just shows how widespread his reach was and his leadership. And I just want to thank you for your friendship and your service to the citizens of Madera.
Anyone else? As I said, this is a bittersweet day and Dan, you're going to be missed. Truly, truly missed. The city, the staff here, everyone. So Godspeed. Just know that you're in my prayers and when you come back to town, drive through the neighborhood and toot the horn. Do we have um, any um, introductions tonight? Bye. Oh, okay, okay. We'll see you in a little while then. Okay. Do we have any workshops, uh, workshops, Lord? Any workshops? And look, I'm sorry, you guys. I really wanted to step out and go cry. I'm sorry. It's it is what it is. No workshops for tonight? Okay. Consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item to be removed, from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately. Alicia, you have anything?
I have no written public comment for this item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make public comment on consent? And we have no one on Zoom.
Okay, great. With no one saying anything? Do we have a motion?
Mayor Protem, a move that we approve consent calendar excluding uh, I'll be 10.
I'd be 10.
Earlier.
Right.
Second.
And also D, um, was it D1?
No, that's just for consent.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Please forgive me. Second.
Second.
Okay. Okay, do we have anyone wishing to speak? We're finished with that.
I believe we've already closed public comment. Um, we have a motion by Councilmember Montes and a second by Councilmember Rodriguez, if I may, um, do roll call.
Roll, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Gallegos. Absent. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Montes.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia.
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas.
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia is absent. So we have five yes votes. Councilmember Gallegos stepped away and Mayor Garcia is absent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next, we have public hearing, which is C1, public hearing related to the annexation of Pecan Square and the citywide landscape and the lighting assessment. District, it's uh, LMD. And Keith, I believe you have that one.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. Um, I believe I've got my screen up here correctly. I'll just go ahead and move into the report and figure out why it's not moving to the next screen. And yes, this is the uh, LMD annexation of Pecan Square into Zone Benefit Eight uh, for the citywide landscaping lighting assessment district. A little bit of background, this is part of a multiple, multiple actions required as part of the approval and ultimate recordation of improvement agreement and final map for the uh, Pecan Square subdivision. The improvement agreement and final map are approved at the June 15 council meeting. Uh, the recordation, the agreement and the map cannot occur until after the landscape maintenance district is finalized and also the community facilities district. There's also fees and other things that need to be paid prior to recordation as well. This does represent the second and final meeting with regard to annexation into LMD Zone Eight. Uh, the purpose of the meeting presents a section 22554 of the Landscape and Lighting Act. Annexation of any parcel into Zone Benefit requires both a public hearing as well as a published notice of public hearing. The public notice was posted on June 25th, 22nd in the uh, or 2022 in the Madera Tribune. Uh, the public meeting is a chance for current property owners in each uh, in the Zone Benefit Eight to comment on the proposed annexation. The reason for the annexation, a new development within the city is subject to annexation to the Landscape Maintenance District. As as council knows, there's uh, already uh, 80 zones within the city. Uh, so what we attempt to do is go ahead and have new projects annex themselves into existing zones rather than creating new zones. Uh, 80 seems like a bit much and we're actually attempting to go ahead and reduce that from 80 to closer to 70 here moving forward with looking at the uh, merger of uh, zones 10A through I. Uh, moving on to the next bullet, assessments are levied to pay for each property's shared landscaping maintenance. Uh, properties within this subdivision will be assessed fees of $33.93 per year as outlined in the staff report and included in the annual uh, engineers report once the subdivision is accepted. Uh, tonight's action would be to convene the public hearing, listen to comments during the public hearing prior to council's consideration of annexation into LMD Zone Eight, and then consider confirmation of the diagram, annual assessments and levies, as well as the acceptance of the covenant for landscape maintenance. Uh, the recommended action uh, following on from the last slide is to conduct the public hearing and receive any public comment if there is any. Adopt a resolution to confirm diagram and assessments as set forth in the staff report. Confirm the levies of the assessments set set forth in the staff report. And then to accept a covenant for Landscape Maintenance District Zone Benefit Eight. And then also uh, authorize city clerk to direct to uh, file diagram and assessments with the county auditor. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions? From the city clerk? Of the comic, like to open this, I'm so sorry. Please forgive me. To anyone, to the public, you would like to have something to say?
We have no one on Zoom and no written public comment, Mayor Protem.
Thank you so very much. This is just a different type of council tonight, you guys. I'm so sorry. I know, huh? Really? He's bothering me. It's okay. It's okay. Okay, we'd like to close public comment? Like to move, make a motion? Anyone like to have something to say?
So move to approve, see one as presented.
Second.
Thank you so very much. City clerk, would you like to call roll, please?
Councilmember Gallegos.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Montes.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia.
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas.
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia is absent. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Keith. Thank you. Next, we have C2, Measure T Renewal of the November election, and that's going to be presented by Arnold Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Allow me to share my screen. The item before council this evening is the Measure T renewal that staff is proposing be placed on the November general election. Council may recall that Measure T is an existing tax that has a 20-year sunset that was initially adopted in 2006 by Madera County voters. The current tax today that was established by Measure T in 2006 is half cent sales tax. To give council some context to that, Measure K in Madera is also a half cent sales tax measure. Right now, Measure K generates approximately $6 million a year annually for the city, but Measure T is specifically for transportation projects. Predating the existing Measure T, if memory serves me, I believe it was Measure A. So about, I'm going to say a year or so ago, and maybe it was a little bit longer. The Madera Transportation Commission had reached out to the city and we started to talk about what does Measure T look like moving forward? Because again, it it's late, it's a sunset in 2026. At that point, the um, uh, two co-chairs can were um, can they were identified. Those two co-chairs are in the audience tonight. They include uh, county supervisors Poitras and Fraser. And the the um, can the Transportation Commission staff who's also in attendance. I'm I'm going to try to present this, but I may have to go to the bullpen to to either um, uh, staff or also city staff who is part of the committee. And so can the overshed uh, can so the overhead is simply identifying the various entities that were involved as part of the steering committee? The steering committee for the City of Madera um, was comprised of the mayor, Councilmember Rodriguez, Keith, our city engineer, uh, Alan Bitter, our deputy city engineer, David Huff, who's in charge of of the transit um, and come come myself. And we we met as a committee approximately 13 times um, over, I'm going to say probably about an eight or nine month period. The discussions were quite live, uh, can they were quite live, uh, kind lively at times and they last about between two to three hours. Um, on top of that, there was a subcommittee largely comprised of I can what I would refer to as a bureaucrats, and I say that with pride, not as a derogatory term, which um, which I sat on along with Alan, Keith and David at times. Um, so some of the steering committee responsibilities was to try to understand existing needs for both the city, but then also the county and including the City of Chalchilla. And then trying to understand future needs and trying to identify what's the community going to look like in 10, 20 or 40 years down the road. We attempted to review existing polling data. Uh, we were trying to provide some feedback. Um, we were trying to gain insight uh, to provide some some context to the community needs. And the steering committee was largely comprised of people come both from the valley floor, um, come from the foothill, not only elected officials, but different community members. So for example, the Camarena, uh, consider the Building Industry Association Valley Children's Hospital. Uh, it was a large consortium of of people. And then it was also, uh, it included assisting the can the draft and the final measures that would be placed on November's general election. Um, some of the guiding principles, um, i- i- it's come what's the goal? You know, again, it's largely transportation, but not just vehicles. It's rather active modes of transportation or alternative modes of transportation. Active modes of transportation are generally walking or cycling. And and then there's also alternative modes of transportation. Um, alternative being to the automobile. Um, you know, which can include um, either bus transit, uh, can new technologies, which are, you know, can they're largely emerging right now. Some of that can be ride sharing programs. And so there's a little bit of everyone in this. Um, or for um, or can there's a little bit of piece of every mode of transportation built into the Measure T program. So the direct, um, so the duration of the Measure T was can was one of the more challenging issues um, for the committee to agree on. There was discussion about placing it for 20 year, 30 year. Ultimately, the steering committee voted to approve it in perpetuity or until ended by voters. One of the benefits to that is that we wouldn't have to go back out. But the other item is we could potentially borrow money against the measure, knowing that we would have a formula or a funding mechanism to pay some of the items back. So we could, in theory, um, start some of the bigger projects sooner rather than later. And that's a huge benefit because as we collectively know, building stuff today, well, probably not today because of inflation, but generally speaking, things, building something today is generally more cost effective than building it 20 years from now. Things generally don't get cheaper, they get more expensive. A a large portion was maintenance. Um, one of the things, um, some of the polling had indicated that one of the number one concerns for for community members is the maintenance of our local roadways. Um, as the council is aware, we do have a tremendous number of potholes. We have damaged roadways. We have some roadways that are just not up to par or up to the community's expectations. Um, again, the investment. Um, again, the investment plan, making sure that we're rightsizing whatever plan for the city of Madera. And then also for the county, including the county or the city of Chachilla. And then we also have implementing guidelines. Um, this is always a challenge because when we're talking ten or say twenty years, it's a little bit easier than when you're talking in the abstract of thirty or forty years. Things are gonna evolve. Um, and what that looks like, it's very difficult to say. So I remember growing up in the eighties, people would say by twenty into the year two thousand, we'd have flying cars. Here we are in twenty twenty-two, and now some of it's becoming a reality. There, there are a couple of very large companies, uh, they're testing it in Southern California as we speak. Um, and they, 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 they have flying cars. And so I'm not too sure exactly what that looks like, but we think we have enough built into the measure that would help accommodate emerging technologies. Um, in terms of the public engagement, again, um, can the committee did meet thirteen times. We had two public opinion polls. We had stakeholder presentations. We had community surveys, virtual meetings, we have social media. So we really try to capture, um, the community's, um, attention for, for feedback. That's obviously very difficult, especially during a time of COVID, because when you have community meetings, there's, it's somewhat, it can be challenging, but it wasn't for a lack of effort. We, we're trying to make sure that the community understands what the program is intended to do, what the goal is. Um, and, and that's challenging, um, during non-COVID times, but I think it becomes even more challenging during COVID. We, um, um, can we did commission two different polls? Um, can the polls, um, resulted in a margin error of four point one percent? So if you remember from your stats class, um, which I don't, but for some reason, the number three percent sticks out in my head. Um, and, and that should be a pretty solid poll. Um, the overhead right now, identify some of the initial ballot language, um, in terms of how some of the questions were asked again. The goal was not to add leading questions, rather the goal was to get a very good idea if the community would vote in favor of this. To, to pass, it does have to receive over sixty-six percent approval. And I think the number sixty-six point six, seven, it's a very specific number. So again, it's, so, so it's two-thirds, um, which again, it's two-thirds plus one. And so we definitely wanted to be sure that if we were to put this on the ballot, that the community appears to favor it. Obviously, we never know what happens in a, in a general election, but again, that's, can that's the goal. And, and in terms of the results, it appears that the community does favor it. So as the overhead, um, had it, this is comparing, um, until ended by voters versus the thirty years. And you can tell it's almost identical to, it's, it's basically one percent off, uh, in terms of seventy-seven percent versus seventy-six percent. And this is simply indicating that it appears that the community does favor it. Some of the important issues, um, at the very top, amongst all the other issues that we struggle with as a community, the number one item was the maintenance of local roads at eighty-eight percent. Now, that's not to dismiss any of the other items. They're all very important to each of us. But, but this obviously shows that transportation is a major issue for our community. And again, this simply isn't just for, 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 for single automobile use, rather it's for everything. Um, it's simply about how we go around in terms of transportation. And then from there, we started getting into some slightly more specific items, right? What, what, what is more important? Bike lanes, bike paths, improving public transit, local maintenance, bridges, state road forty-one. Some of the key quarters in our community, Avenue seven, nine, twelve, and, um, here's some of the responses. For the most part, most of them, um, um, they, they indicate that, that the community is concerned about transportation. So here's some of the two, uh, can tier two items, um, important, but not maybe as important, and that's reducing traffic congestion, synchronizing traffic signals on major roadways, which is always a challenge. If you're driving down a road and you're trying to hit everyone, it always seems like they turn red. Um, but, but those are obviously important, but, uh, in terms of polling, they come in a little bit lower than some of the tier one items. And if you go back to some of the tier one items, those are obviously the slightly more expensive items. So one of the, in a nutshell, the biggest thing that the polling did indicate is fixing local roadways was the number one priority. Uh, the next couple of slides are, are gonna go into some of the financing. These are estimates, um, because it's very difficult to, to, to try to speculate where how taxing is gonna go, how interest, but generally, over a thirty-year period, if measure T were to be approved, it would generate roughly eight hundred and sixty-six million dollars for the county. And when I say the county, that includes both the city of Madera and the city of Chachilla. So the next question is, is how does that money get divided? Uh, the steering committee collectively voted on, on, um, on, on, on separating funding based on population. So, um, there, there are lots of different ways of doing it. There's miles traveled, there you can do it by how much income is generated in your local community, but the group collectively felt that can that the most appropriate, um, can formula for dividing the revenue would be population, which mirrors how it's done today, so there would be no change. The second one, which is, how do we know that any plan we come up today is gonna stand the, the time in, in in terms of emerging technologies, how, what's important to the community twenty years down the road? So built into the plan, it identifies that every fifteen years, any type of investment plan is gonna be revisited and it's gonna be recalibrated. Because again, today's needs are probably gonna be different than they were fifteen years from now, or say forty-five years from now. And so that's built into the plan. Um, uh, we talked a little bit about this, but these are some of the benefits in terms of why, why it's important until ended by voters. And again, one of the big things is, is we could potentially, and again, I, I can't state this with absolute confidence, but we could potentially bond or borrow against some of the financing to try to get some of the bigger projects done. It, it can be a little more challenging to do that. The other challenge we have locally, and that's, can this includes both or really all three jurisdictions, is that, um, our road, our local roadways are not in the best shape. And, and whenever you have more funding, you can hopefully improve some of the roadways. And that's the goal. And whenever you have greater certainty of, of, of having additional funds moving forward, it's a little bit easier to plan for that. And that's one of the key reasons why we collectively felt that it would be appropriate to do it for a longer period of time versus thirty years. Um, I'm gonna skip these, but, because we talked a little, a little bit about these, some of the allocation principles was local choice, local control, making sure that the local agency had flexibility for, again, s- s- some of the cities' needs here in Madera probably gonna be a little bit different than the county and vice versa. Fix it first, making sure that we're keeping existing roads maintained. That was the number one priority, uh, of the group, uh, leaving no neighborhood behind, improving safety and making sure we have equity in the allocation of funding. And now, and that the needs reflect all community members, not just those with a single family or, or not single family. I'm starting to talk city planning terms, single, uh, single-use vehicles or single occupancy vehicles. So in terms of some of the potential allocation, um, this pie chart or this donut chart shows some of the potential funding. Um, again, every community would be a little bit different based on our needs, but in a nutshell, we have local and neighborhood street maintenance and puddle repairs would be approximately thirty-five percent of the entire funding. And again, in terms of polling, that was the number one item. Um, and so it's reflective of the actual pie chart. It's, 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 it was identified by the voters as the most important item, so it, it would in theory receive the most funding. We have community, neighborhood, street and road subprogram at fifteen percent, local, um, flexibility at twelve and a half percent, major routes at twenty-five, public transit at four, safe routes to school and pedestrian and bike safety at four, and then clean air and new technologies at three. But again, some of these investment plans, it's built right in where, where this could potentially be revisited at a later date. So the question becomes as well, who revisits that? And we do have the MCTC board, which the city of Madera has two voting members on that board as well. So in terms of comparing the existing efforts versus the two thousand and six, you can see it on here that, that there are some more defined, um, pies or, 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 or areas that are a little bit more specific, which, which we collectively felt very passionate about, making sure that the greatest need, um, is going to receive, um, some funding allocation. Um, so again, um, one of the challenges with that is trying to make sure that, that staff has enough flexibility. But collectively, we thought that it was important to try to notify the community on front end, this is where your money's gonna go. It's very difficult to convince someone to raise your taxes or maintain your taxes, but you don't really know where it's gonna go. So one of the things that we tried saying is this is where the funding is gonna go. We're not gonna move it. You have a word, and we're not gonna move it, and this is what it would be spent on. So, uh, can this is a hypothetical, but, but it's, it's based on, and not necessarily hypothetical, but this assumes, um, the eight hundred and sixty-six million dollars. Um, based on the current population of the city of Madera, which is currently at forty-one point eight three percent of the overall county population, the city would be receiving, um, north of two hundred and twenty-six million dollars. With, uh, I'm sorry, two hundred and sixty-six million dollars, I misspoke. For the community and neighborhood roads, um, it would be two hundred and twenty-six million. But then, as you can see on the overhead, that's broken down into three parts. That's a local, uh, road and, and street maintenance repair program, the community neighborhood streets road subprogram, local flexibility, which would total two hundred and twenty-six million. Major route would, um, would be twenty, uh, it, it would be twenty-five percent. Public transit for the city would be about fourteen point five million. Safe routes to school would be roughly fourteen point five million, and then clean air technology would be closer to eleven million dollars. This is all assuming that the city maintains the fourteen, or the forty-one point eight three percent. And that the numbers in terms of population, um, can remain exactly how they are today. We know that that's fluid because the city's currently gonna be growing with village G, but at the same time, the county has a lot of growth as well, as does Chachilla. So in terms of some of the bigger projects that I'll call them, probably not some of the smaller ones, but in terms of the bigger projects that city staff identified in the first fifteen years. So again, this would be year one through fifteen. You can tell that on the left-hand column, it says city of Madera. So these are projects that we feel very strongly about, that they're much needed, that, that we would be committing to building. Um, there's obviously a lot of other programs in terms of potholes, but in terms of new capital projects, um, the city of Madera staff identified the Cleveland Avenue. Um, um, we're recommending that we would allocate five million dollars to study that can the interchange at Highway ninety-nine Cleveland and the railroad. Um, for those of us that have been in Madera a long time, and I think everyone in this room has, that's a very challenged intersection. It's a very awkward inter, uh, change. And, and i- it's, um, it's an area of great frustration for the community. And if you're a business owner, it's challenging because it's hard to get in and out. And I think if you ask a lot of people in the community, it's a challenge. Five million dollars does not improve it. The five million dollars would be to prepare a study to identify what we can do. The problem right now is we don't have a plan for that interchange. Um, so the do-nothing approach is probably gonna get us that nothing. But if we have a plan, at least we can identify alternatives. And at some point, as a community, I think we owe it to future generations to say we need to do something, and this would be the very first step. The second item we have identified, and these are not in any particular order, would be Ellis Avenue. We know that from Crown Road, which is right about Highway ninety-nine going to Country Club, uh, we've identified uh, about six point two million dollars, measure T would pay for or fund about five million. One other thing that you notice on here where it says other funding potentially available, one thing about having a self-help tax. And by that is, when a local community taxes itself, you're eligible for greater both state funding and federal funding. Uh, because Madera right now, we are a self, uh, uh, a self-help county, we're eligible for greater funding in comparison to those communities that are not self-help. So, so by doing this, it's very difficult for me to tell you how much more millions would come into the community. But I can assure you it's in the millions because we would not be eligible for other sources of revenue or, or pots of, uh, of grant funds. So we have Ellis Avenue, uh, we have the Gateway Drive Bridge improvements. We're, we're guesstimating right now roughly seventeen point five million. That would be to Whiting Gateway. Um, for measure T, it'd be roughly ten and a half million. Road twenty-eight entoser, there's some improvements that are kind of are much needed in that area. Um, roughly six million dollars overall project cost, four point eight million dollars coming from measure T. We have the Westbury Bridge, um, roughly twelve and a half million dollars. The city currently has three million dollars in the bank. So measure T would pay for nine point five million dollars of that to actually build a bridge. Um, we have Yosemite Entosur Interchange, or I'm sorry, the intersection improvements, roughly a million dollars, measure T would pay for half a million. And that's it. So those are the larger capital projects. This is obviously not an exhaustive list because pothole repairs, if you recall, was thirty-five percent of it. So there's a lot more money in other parts, transit, emerging technology. So again, these are some of the bigger items that we think the community would be interested in. We've talked about this. And so the other question can that's come up is why now? The, the existing, um, um, measure does not sunset until two thousand and twenty-six. And why do it earlier? One, um, i- it's, it's easier to plan when you know if you're gonna have the money or not. If you're not gonna have the money, then city staff and, and, um, county staff and Chachilla staff are gonna have to begin well or identify alternative sources of revenue, and that's always challenge, um, and that's always challenging. The other thing that we noticed is that there is great support right now for measure T renewal, which is roughly seventy-three percent. Um, so the only way this would pass is if the community supports it, and right now there appears to be that support. Um, and at the same time, you have support right now. Sometimes you have to strike when the iron's hot. There's no guarantee that support is gonna be here in two thousand and twenty-four. And the other thing that we, uh, talked a little bit about, it does potentially lower the cost of making repairs today. Again, with inflation, it's kind of challenging, um, to argue that. The other challenge is there is a presidential election in two thousand and twenty-four. I, I think as a nation, um, it, it's quite divided if anyone watches the news. Um, we're not too sure exactly how, how postponing this would play out in a, in a presidential election. Um, it probably poses a lot of challenges. Um, and then, and the other thing that we've identified is that residents have been, uh, very loud and clear. They've made their message heard. Local roads are the number one priority. And, um, and we just wanna be sure that we can continue to address some of their concerns. So in terms of next steps, this is bring presented to the city council of Madera today. Uh, it's gonna be presented to, to Chachilla next week, uh, as, um, as well as the county. If the city of Madera does not support or does not approve the resolution, that's before council this evening, that this project would more than likely, we would have to continue it to a date certain. But it wouldn't, i- it may potentially not be able to make the November ballot. I can't state that with confidence, but the item before council tonight is not to approve the measure, rather it's to simply approve it, to put it on the ballot to allow the voters to, to to either vote, uh, yes or no. And again, it does have to pass by two-thirds majority vote. So with that, um, we talked about the roads. And with that, I, I will conclude my presentation, but I'm, I'm gonna can look to Keith or MCTC staff or either co-chair if they, if I missed anything, or if I glossed anything over, if you would like to add anything. But, but, so no pressure. So it looks like I did such a wonderful job. I know it has any comments unless Keith would like to say something. So, okay. Supervisor Poitres, who served as a co-chair of the steering committee, would like to add something.
Thank you, Arnaldo, and, uh, Mayor Protem and council members. It's a great honor to be here this evening, and it was a great honor to serve as the, uh, one of the, uh, vice chairs of the steering committee with Supervisor Fraser. And I'd just like to mention a few things. Um, there's two types of counties in California. There are those who have self-help tax measures and those who wish they had them. So there's fifty-eight counties in California, twenty-five are identified as self-help counties, uh, like us, the county of Madera. And there's thirty-three that are not. And, uh, so many of them just can't pass them because they don't have the political will. They don't have the will of the voters, but they're really missing out, um, in terms of what a self-help measure does. Um, and, uh, Arnaldo did a great job, uh, presenting, uh, some of the background. We've had a self-help, um, measure here since, uh, nineteen ninety, so for thirty-two years, measure A, measure T. And, um, I can't tell you the number of projects that are, were made possible, um, all over this city, uh, because of, of measure T. And, or measure A and measure T. Um, we, we can leverage funding that we could not do if we were not a self-help county. And the good news is all of that money stays here. You know, it's not money that we pay at the pump, we pay our gas tax and it goes to Sacramento, and we hope some of it comes back. Um, it, one hundred percent of it stays here in this county. That's why they call it a self-help. And, um, I'd just like to thank the city team for their hard work and, uh, participation. Uh, as was mentioned, uh, councilmember Rodriguez and the mayor, as well as, uh, the MCTC, uh, members, councilmember Gallegos and councilmember, um, Rodriguez, who served on MCTC, provided outstanding Councilmember Gagos and Councilmember Rodriguez, who served on MCTC, provided outstanding support, and everybody on the screen there. So thank you very much. And any other questions, please feel feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, do we have any other members wishing to speak on this item?
I have no written public comment, and there are no callers on Zoom.
Okay. Okay, I will close public comment at this time. Any discussion from my colleagues? Excuse me. Okay, Councilmember Gagos, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Evans. I would like Supervisor Poitras to come back up and introduce the staff that's here because Councilman Rodriguez and I know who they are, but I would like my fellow colleagues to also know who's in the audience representing MCTC.
Thank you very much. And yes, we have our police chief, Dino Lawson, right here. We have the Montez family over here as well. So, you know, there you go. But as in terms of MCTC staff, we have our esteemed executive director, Tricia Taylor of Madera County Transportation Commission. And been there a couple of years. And then we have the assistant executive director or the deputy, I'm sorry, the deputy executive director, Troy McNeil. And Troy has been there since 2006. In fact, he joined right after we passed or right, right before, I think it was in October of '06, and we passed the second measure. So congratulations and thank you, Troy, for your hard work over the years. And of course, Supervisor Fraser. So thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I just wanted to thank Arnoldo for the presentation and also the staff, not only here at the city, but also at MCTC. You know, I was involved with the Measure T Steering Committee, and I got to tell you that, you know, we had, like Arnoldo had mentioned, numerous meetings. And within those meetings, we had stakeholders from various sectors of our county, including here in our city. We had many, many stakeholders. Some were absent, but the majority of them were here representing the city and the interest in the city, of course. And as a committee, we met, we had a process, a rigorous process, you know. Obviously, when you have over 25 members in this steering committee, you're going to have different, you know, people are going to pull a certain way. And obviously, there were some contentious comments and back and forth. But overall, I think the committee reached a consensus to to kind of divide these equal amounts in the funding. And and I think that was what made it very positive, is that we were able to reach this consensus and be able to see that the infrastructure that we currently have, you know, there's always shortfalls. There's not enough funding at times to be able to fix these potholes, to be able to fix our freeways, to be able to fix our our main corridors that take us or our public that make it make it safety for for our public. So I think in in just reaching the allocations, and again, reaching consensus of what we thought was the best way of distributing these funds. A prime example, obviously, we were able to leverage over $80 million to be able to bring in the additional lanes here at the Highway 99. So if any of you drive by or drive out of Madera, you'll see the the benefit of not having that congested traffic. A lot of it stays here in Madera. And it's unfortunate because folks that want to travel emergencies or what have you, it's hard to get through when you have two lanes. Now, the next project, of course, and I saw that on the the project list, is trying to get us from Avenue 12 to Avenue 7. And we hope to do that also, leveraging those dollars. Because again, being a self-help county, we can tax ourselves, and we have been, to be able to meet that gap that we don't have. And leveraging those additional millions of dollars that we can get certainly can make public safety for us even even much better for our families. So I was very content with how this came about. I do got to say that coming into transportation, you know, it was very difficult for me to to really understand a lot of the concepts of what happens in the funding, a lot of acronyms. And I'll tell you, there's no other department that has so many acronyms, but you know, you get to learn them, you get to understand where all the sources of funding are. And with that, you know, we're going to, we're going to see projects that come before us. A lot of the times, we don't know that they come. So one of the requests that I've asked from MCTC, not only staff, is that we also highlight where the funds are coming from, that we make signs, like you see it out on certain roads, Avenue 9, Avenue 12, funding made possible by SB 1. Well, here are your local dollars at work. And I think it's important that whenever we create a project that's being funded by these funds, Measure T funds, that are very important, that we also highlight them, that it's our own funds, our taxpayers' funds at work. And and I'm just very appreciative of, again, staff, Arnoldo, your team, and MCTC and all of the steering committee, to be able to come together and allocate these funds. I know that some of them change, but the good thing about it is that after 15 years, we can come revisit. And at that time, there may be a different need. We may see a reduction in combustible engines and maybe a rise in these EVs. So there may be a different need in how we address transportation then, whether, you know, different modes of transportation or how we address our public roads, our sidewalks, our our safe routes to school. But that's the beauty of it, is that we can come back, modify as needed. And that's why you have an oversight committee and you have your steering committee. So again, I just want to express my gratitude, not only with city staff, with MCTC, and my colleagues that sit also on the MCTC. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, I'd like to ask for motion for my colleagues.
I move to approve C2 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you so very much. City Clerk, will you please call Ron?
Councilmember Gagos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia is absent. Motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Okay, next we'll have D2, receive and file. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you. Receive and file update on the state water board's emergency resolution to reduce water demand and improve water conservation. And that is going to be from our very own Dan Foss.
Dan, your mic, you might want to check your mic. We can't hear you.
No.
No.
Am I not coming across at all, guys?
Better, much better, much better.
Much better or not very good?
We can hear you perfect, but your slideshow, if you can expand your screen.
Okay, I had to shut one screen. So let me, let me restart my slideshow. I apologize, everybody. This was working perfectly before. I don't know what I did. So let me reshare the screen. I'm going to reshare in a second.
That just means you need to stay here a little longer and get more training.
No, get the hang of it? Hold on, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's the first time it's happened to me, but it's about the thing. Okay, is everything looking good now?
Yes.
And I sound okay?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't know what I did. So let's try this again. All right, so what we're going to be presenting today is, I got off Lester, I apologize, some new water restrictions that was brought down by the state. So the good news is for today, before we jump into this, there's nothing really that we need to adjust as far as the city goes. We're already on top of it, but we do need to recognize this. And there's some concerns or some issues that might be coming forward that we want to be aware of to address in the future. So on April 21st, May 10th, July 8th, and October 19th of 2021, the governor, Governor Newsom issued proclamations that a state of emergency exists statewide due to severe drought conditions and directed state agencies to take immediate action to preserve critical water supply. So as we know, this is nothing new. And we've been in a drought for a very long time, and the governor's office has been trying to address those concerns. So on March, in March, the governor signed executive orders directing the state water board to consider adopting emergency services or emergency water conservation. And then May 24th, they adopted said water conservation plan. So included in the request from the state water board who created this was to create an emergency regulating regulation text requiring urban water suppliers to implement Level 2, which I'm going to get into in just a moment, of their water shortage contingency plans, and establish a ban on all irrigation of non-functional turf by entities in commercial, industrial, and institutional sector. So what that means, non-functional turf, what that means, I have the exact definition here, but here's basically what it means is anything that's non-decorative grass is what we're going to be considering for, for the most part. So it does not mean turf that's going to be used like in arcs or we're going to have community involvement. The thing that comes right off the top of your head is going to be grass like in front of like the mow strip in front of some commercial buildings. That would be considered non-functional turf. So Level 2 of the state plan is the same as our Level B of the urban water, urban water management plan. So they're kind of the same thing. And that went into effect in the city of Madera, September 6th and 27th. So the restrictions for that plan is gives you these watering hours between 12 and 10 a.m. or between 7:00 and 12:00 p.m. with the staggered address. So your even is going to be on Sunday, Wednesday, Friday, while your odds are Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. Again, I don't think this is anything new. This is something that has been out there a lot for most residents for a very long time. There is, so the city already has in compliance with the emergency resolution, all the needs to be done is to receive, or I'm sorry, all that needs to be done is to receive and file. So there is one that might come to council, come the winter months, and that is a minor deviation. And what that is, is we do not have different watering restriction days for winter months as we do for summer months. What I mean by that is you can water three days a week during the winter if you so choose in the city of Madera, whereas the state restriction says you should not. I personally don't think it's much of an issue because nobody's watering three days a week in the winter here. If they are, they're watering a swamp because the salt just won't take it and nobody's paid for it. So this is already all in effect. So non-functional turf for the CII customers. So regarding the ban on irrigation of non-functional turf for CII customers, and again, that's for the non or for the turf that's not being used for regular purposes before they're going to be on it regularly. Staff will be communicating states' irrigation restrictions through multiple outreach measures such as social media, what we're doing right here, too, for example, inserts in their bills and direct mailers. So it's an information campaign, essentially, is what we're trying to do, is just inform everybody as opposed to having to enforce things and make sure that they're reducing watering as much as possible. Information and education will continue through the duration of the regulation that's in effect now, and we expect this to be for at least one year. I think one year is a dream. I think we're going to have these restrictions for some type of several years or so. For the city staff, we will be monitoring and evaluating where we are watering, and we're going to continue to make sure that we're using the best use of all our water, or especially for the non-functional turf. One exception of this is the state does recognize that we don't want to quit watering trees. Quit, if you stop watering trees, that can be very expensive. You'd have to replace them eventually. We don't want lack of trees in any community, so the watering of trees will continue. So our recommendation is to receive and file an update for the State Water Resource Control Board, emergency, their emergency resolution to reduce water demand and improve water conservation in response to the governor's declared statewide drought. And with that, I again apologize for the technical errors that slowed us down, but that is the presentation. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments? Anyone from the public?
Check your emails now. I have no written public comment, Mayor Pro Tim. And Mark, do we have anyone on Zoom?
There's no one on Zoom.
All right, I'd like to close public comment and then discussion from my colleagues. Councilwoman Gagos?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Evans. Dan, question, does that mean that staff will be bringing back a resolution for that winter watering schedule to have in place for us just in case?
I believe so. I believe that's the best strategy and thing that we should do is, as we approach the winter months, we should bring back a resolution to make a very slight modification that we only allow watering one day a week as opposed to the three days.
Great, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I just wanted to thank Dan for the presentation. And like you said, I think the city has already taken steps or taken steps in the past to try to conserve water. One of the things that I that I will say, I know that we do a good job, and hopefully we can do even a better job, is really more outreach in regards to our conservation and our rebate program that we have for those folks that would like to take advantage of maybe adding artificial turf or their landscape, dry tolerant landscape that can certainly benefit in conserving water. That's also something that I know the city can do a better job in improving that. And again, continued newsletters and and the way we outreach, but I know that that's huge and also helping us conserve. Now, we as a city obviously do do our part in conserving water, but we also expect that our surrounding neighbors also do the same in regards to the the executive order with the sustainable ground management plan that we have in place with our GSAs. We have to reach a certain equilibrium when it comes to pulling groundwater out. So I hope that they too can can look at this and see how they can also cut back on on pulling water from the ground. But thank you, appreciate your your report, Dan.
Thank you very much. And once again, Dan, Godspeed. Thank you so much for everything. I'd like to ask for a motion for my colleagues.
Do we approve item D2 as presented?
May I have a second, please? Thank you so very much.
City Clerk, please, Alicia. Councilmember Gagos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia is absent. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so very much. Now we have administrative reports, and it's regarding the tenant protection rights. And Hilda, I believe you have that one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This has been a quiet meeting. Wow, I expected much more robust activity. Aren't you glad you're not the Fresno cog? So anyway, you, council, you and members of the public have received the staff report that's provides a very detailed analysis concerning this subject matter of tenant rights and in particular AB 1482. So I'm not going to go through the the report that's in the agenda, but if you have any questions on it, I can certainly answer any of them. I'm just going to basically this evening, provide you an overview for your consideration and for any direction that you may decide to have, if any. So as background, since March 31 of 2022, there was an expiration of many of the statewide eviction protections in California. And And given the increase in evictions where we've had it in the last, since then, and the end of statewide assistance to tenants, there does appear to be a great need for anti-displacement services throughout the state, not just in the city of Madera. So as far as AB 1482, as that was the, the subject that most of the residents that came in a couple of meetings ago were interested in and they were concerned about, I will give you an overview. There may be members of the public who later wish to, to watch this. So basically in 2019, Governor Newsom signed this legislation, the Tenant Protection Act of 2019, and it went into effect in January 2020 and will continue in effect for another 15 years. And it is codified in the California Civil Code. So what does AB 1482 say? First, there are limits on rent increases. There are rent increases up to 10% per year. And there can be two increases in a year so long as they do not exceed the 10%. So you could have three and seven, or five and four, or four and six, et cetera. There's also a, something called, it's kind of interesting. It's, I call it a clawback provision. That's when laws go back in time. And so this clawback provision sent, says that this rent cap is retroactive to March of 2019, which is kind of interesting because there is no, nothing in the legislation. And in fact, the legislation says that the landlord does not have to pay back the tenant if the landlord had a higher rent during that time period. So that was something, of course, if somebody would want us to review further, we could, but it, it really did not make sense from my perspective. Second, I think some of the most significant language, aside from the limitations on the increases, is the just cause language for evictions. And there are two types of just cause. First, the at-fault just cause, where there's something that the tenant did or did not do that allows a landlord to evict the tenant, such as defaulting in rent, a breach of a lease agreement, maintaining a nuisance or public waste on the property, criminal activity in the property, assigning or subletting the property in violation of the lease or using the premises for an unlawful purpose. Second, there's the no-fault just cause. And that's where the landlord may initiate evictions because, one, the landlord has an intent to occupy the, the premises himself or herself or by the spouse, the domestic partner, children, grandchildren, parents or grandparents. So basically, the landlord would say, I need to evict you. You, you haven't done anything wrong. However, I'm giving you appropriate notice that this tenancy is, is terminated because my family needs to use a property. It's my property and that's how I want to use it now. And then withdrawal of the property from the rental market. There is no timeframe though, as far as that goes, like you could say withdrawal from the rental, from the market for 30 days, 60 days or longer. It seems like it should be for a more significant period of time, but the law was not clear in that regard. And the other one is where the owner is complying with a, an order by a governmental agency or a court to vacate the premises. And it might be property that's uninhabitable and some, the city has to go through code enforcement and the property has to be, be vacated. And so that would be another just cause reason. The one that got tricky and the one that a lot of the residents described that evening was the one that's called intent to demolish or substantially remodel the residential real property. And that's another reason why somebody can be evicted. But the residents commented that this substantially remodel language was being used as a pretext and they really weren't substantially remodeling. And to be clear, the legislation has very concise language on what the term substantially remodel means. It means the replacement or substantial modification of the structure, electrical plumbing, or mechanical system that requires a permit from a governmental agency or the abatement of hazardous materials, including lead-based paint, mold, or asbestos in accordance with federal, state, or local laws. And cosmetic improvements such as just painting and minor repairs do not qualify as substantial rehabilitation. So from what the members of the public said, that, that may be an area where some landlords, not all landlords, but some landlords may be abusing their authority or stretching the, the term substantially remodel. Then of course, there, there's, there is a relocation assistance that's provided. And that relocation assistance is equivalent to one month's rent. So it's really not that much, but it is something to help tenants who are being evicted for no fault of their own. And there is also some noticing that's required landlords are supposed to advise tenants of all their rights under AB 1482. I doubt that that's something that they have done, but many, many may have. And then there's different kinds of notices as well for notices. So, so that's in a nutshell what AB 1482 does. So the questions raised are a number of them. One is, well, if all these violations are taking place, may the city enforce AB 1482? And based on our review, there is no statutory authority for the city to enforce this state legislation. It is state legislation, so the state, the city may not enforce it. So the next question that has been asked is, well, can the city enact its own evictions ordinance? And actually, under AB 1482, there's express language that allows for that. However, it has to be what's called a more protective ordinance than AB 1482. So, and there's very, there's specific criteria in AB 1482 that describes what a more protective ordinance would mean. And there's four bullet points I have here. One, the just cause for termination is consistent with AB 1482. It further limits the reasons for termination, provides for higher relocation assistance amounts, or provides additional protections. The, the city in this case would have to make a binding finding within their local ordinance if the ordinance is more protective than AB 1482. And then once, once you have a local ordinance, only that applies in the city, not AB 1482. So there is that authority for a city like you. However, I have to underscore that while it may be legally permissible to adopt such an ordinance, the legal complexities of such a measure would require significant investments of time and money, not only in crafting the ordinance, because writing it may be something, but that's finite, even though it takes some time and some money, but more in the implementation of such an ordinance. It could, it could be quite expensive. And I, I do note that in my research, I was trying to figure out what other cities are doing and other cities are actually, have actually gone in the opposite direction. So a lot of the cities that had ordinances have now terminated those ordinances or they have expired by their own terms. So it's not something that, that many cities are getting into. Instead, there, there are many communities with, with this new wave of evictions, they're looking at other options. And, and some of the things that I included in the memo and that I'll expand a little on right now are things like adopting a tenant outreach program, which could be very specific, like door knocking, canvassing, pop-up clinics to assist tenants with understanding their rights and also if they are facing eviction. And that could be done with additional staff or by contracting with, with a nonprofit. Most of, most cities do it through nonprofits. Another one would be a specific dedication of funding to assist tenants with relocation assistance, either by the city directly again, where the city, they come and the city actually makes payment or through nonprofit organizations. And so that would be something like, you know, AB 1482 gives 30 days. Then the city would say, if you've been, if you're given 30 days, 30 days of financial assistance under AB 1482, because it's for just, no fault just cause, the city could kick in, say, another 30 days. So that would be another example of something the city could decide to do if it desired. And something a little more intense would be what I call a case management program, where the city would provide multilingual intensive case management support to residents at risk of, of eviction or supporting them with producing documents or completing forms. A lot of times, there are other sources. There are still some sources out there. In fact, there is some litigation against the state because of the monies that were supposed to be earmarked for more funding for tenants. And, and, and so there's, so in those cases, what happens sometimes, and it happened throughout COVID, many people receive benefits that were out there either through the city, the county, nonprofits, et cetera. But others did not because they simply did not know how to obtain those services. And so some, some assistance, again, through a nonprofit, for example, saying, we're going to provide funding so that you can assist tenants with these kinds of services. Something not as, not as specific, but in a little more symbolic, but I, I still, somebody asked, well, that doesn't really do anything. I do think it is somewhat symbolic, but I think having a tenant file a report that this has happened to me and AB 1482 is being violated. And then the city could, would send a notice to the landlord acknowledging receipt and maybe even publishing that. Just, you know, again, it's not enforcement, but it is something where it becomes a public matter and having an entity such as a city has a little more bearing than if the landlord sends the tenant, something like that. Another, yes.
Can I stop you real quick? I do have a question on, I think, I may pretend those two. So would there be any liability there? So if somebody files the complaint and we, we would be obligated to do the investigation to verify?
There, I would, I would think that there should be minimum, some minimum verification. I don't think you could just accept it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, so everything takes, even though it seems like a simple process, everything will take time and resources and that to do that. The other one would be.
One more question. Let me ask real quick. I've been contacted by a number of members where I live and they're, sure, go ahead on. Yeah, please. They sign contracts and the contracts state that the rent can be increased for their space from three to 5%, but they've received letters stating that they, they, the letters that they've received state that they signed a contract that said that they can be increased by 8%. So my question is, and this is what I was asked, so I'm asking you now. If they signed the contract stating that they could be, their rent could be raised between 3% and 5% and now the management company is coming back to them saying that they signed a contract stating they can raise it for 8%, but they have paperwork showing three to five, what can be done about that?
They, they need to seek, seek legal services.
Okay.
They would need to seek legal services to, to assist them. And I have to tell you, I know municipal law. It's been a long time since I've done landlord tenant. When I came out of law school, I worked for the Legal Aid Society in Alameda County, working with indigent families. And I did a lot of landlord tenant, but that's been many more years since some of you have been alive. So many more years ago. That was like in 1976.
So basically, I just need to make sure that, let them know that they need to seek legal counsel.
And that's a kind again. And, and so then that, that's an impediment because people, some people don't have funds to go see. But there are organizations out there and maybe something that's not listed would just be to, to catalog every kind of, of, of resource that there is because there are some out there and put them on your website and advertise them. Put them on your bills once in a while, if that, if that continues to be a problem. And then you could also do something less, less intense, which would be just adopt a state resolution that says it, that calling the state legislature to adopt more additional protections for tenants. There's, there's also something that Fresno had, which was actually providing legal services for eviction defense. And they've stopped that. They've stopped that. They, they poured hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars into that, that effort and it's ended. And just to give you an example, they, they did an RFP for legal services for firms to help the tenants and they were paying $2.60 an hour, which is not a lot, but it still adds up. And so then finally, the city could look at any or, you know, a combination of some of those potential options. So that's basically it. It's just for you to consider and decide, is this something we really want to delve into? Or is this something that we leave to others to take care of?
Right, we have a question from Councilman Rodriguez.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. Hilda, you know what? Appreciate you giving us the options because I mean, I can see how maybe the city may be able to adopt some of these options. I mean, as far as dedicating funding, then that, I think that becomes tougher because then you have to take away from our general fund and already departments that probably are, you know, are in need of additional funding. So that, that would be a tough one for me now because unless we identify where the funds are coming from, I, I think we already as, as, as a council, we designate the CDPG funds as HUD has stated, you know, to a lot of the tenants and homeless. So I, I just wish there was more of that grant funding that we can utilize to hopefully, you know, give these to these nonprofit organizations that have been very helpful in assisting folks with, with tenant rights. But I, I do like the, the policies that we can assist tenants in understanding their rights and maybe even adopting a resolution and calling for additional state action. You know, maybe, I don't know, a letter of support in some way to be able to help our, 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 help the tenants across not only our city, but across California. Maybe a more language that kind of, like you said, you know, there's certain areas that are vague when it comes to language. And I, and I think AB 1482 certainly, you know, spells out some of the key points there. Like you mentioned with rents and increases and no fault and then the other just fault and then the other no fault. But at the end of the day, you know, if we put a proactive ordinance, I, I don't know. I was going to ask you, because that, could that expose us to litigation with your relentless, right?
If you have an ordinance, you will have litigation. If you have an ordinance, you would need to, you, you don't want to adopt an ordinance that you will not enforce. So if your intent is to enforce it, then yes, there will be litigation. Not only in enforcing it, but there could be litigation, but by some out there that are, you know, looking for easier targets and the, what I call the big boys and girls like Los Angeles, San Francisco, San Diego, when they adopt ordinances, you know, they, they have a cadre of lawyers and multimillions of dollars to defend themselves. And they, they see a smaller city enacting an ordinance. Some of those groups that are anti-tenant protections might, might be, might see an opportunity to challenge the ordinance.
Yeah, and, and I know that in our city, I mean, the majority, there's a lot of good landlords and you're going to have some that obviously take advantage and what have you. But you know, and I, I think those that, that don't understand what rights they have, I think it's important to highlight either some policies that say when someone inquires about that, you know, here's maybe, what's the name of the coalition? You know, and, and working with them, you know, forming a more, a better partnership and also the community action, partnership with them as well. And I, I think we already have some there. I mean, obviously that's why we do these CDG funds is to try to, you know, give them the ability to, to, you know, utilize that, that funding so that they can help with these folks. But I certainly would be, I, I would lean to, to at least with some of those options. And, and one of them would be to adopt the resolution and maybe approve some policies that can. and maybe approve some policies that can help the tenants, you know, with, with understanding their rights. And maybe they, they can carry on and, and, and utilize one of the, the consultants.
And, uh, on, on, on that one, um, other than just doing like a blast or putting out on your website, anything beyond that would, would still cost you money, just, you know.
Right. And I, I know you mentioned staff, so, um, I, I, I mean, as it is, I, I, I think staff sometimes is overwhelmed, so I don't know. Again, that would be a question to our city manager and our finance department, if that's something that we can bear at the time. But, uh, obviously, you know, anything that we can do to assist our tenants. And, and that's either, uh, supporting, you know, a letter of support or calling for more actions so that folks have, uh, better avenues. Or, you know, how they can, how they can get assisted with, with this, uh, you know, just today, I kid you not, I, I had a lady come in there trying to buy a home and, you know, it's, I had, I had to pretty much tell her that, you know, with the income and her story was like, it's, it's hard, you know, it's, it's hard because I'm not an attorney. And as much as I want to say, well, you need to know what your rights are because you're being evicted after ten years, for what reason? And she, she couldn't, she couldn't tell me a reason and it's unfortunate because she can't afford to buy a home. And, 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 you know, the, obviously their, their outlet is, well, let me see if I can finance. But in looking at the amounts, it's, it's not possible and it seems like, yeah, it's, it's unfortunate. I, I can't really speak on behalf of the landlord because I don't know what their situation, but I know that based on our comments, it seems like it's, it's.
Right. Education is, I think, very important. Education is key. Um, Councilman Montes.
Yeah, so, um, thank you, Hilda. This is a very good report, gives us some options. Um, today, I, I, my, my recommendation would be to take no action. Um, yeah, but I would want an opportunity, I don't know if it's, it's me or staff, you know, it's pretty easy for me to say that. Um, to, to engage with the stakeholders and, and maybe, I don't want to say come up with a committee. Uh, but I, I have, I have received phone calls on this item, um, specifically, specifically for this agenda. Um, fortunately, the people didn't show up and they didn't submit any comments. Um, but I know that, that people are interested and, and most people understand that there, there is something that, that we can do. And I think, um, getting some of the nonprofits more engaged and involved and seeing how we can work together rather than it just being placed all on the city. Um, I think that would probably be the best, um, route, in my opinion. And, you know, that's probably gonna fall on me to reach out to people and maybe I should have done a better job of getting people here today to talk about it. But, um, I think some of these things are, are, I don't want to say they're gonna be easy, but it's, it's gonna be less burdensome, um, for the community. Because at the end of the day, all the residents are gonna have to pay for whatever we do. Um, you know, it's not gonna be just one and some of them are gonna get the benefit of it, but others are gonna have to pay for it. Be things that we can't do.
So, so you're, so you're thinking more of like calling a congress of all the various groups that are engaged in this type of activity?
Yeah.
And then having them work, uh, meet with the city together and discuss it and then come up with recommendations. Based on these, based on the options that are presented.
Yeah, but I also want to engage.
Or others.
Yeah, some of the people that will be impacted by this and, and, you know, who comes to mind is the Realtors, the, their association of Realtors. Because they're gonna have some thoughts on this, you know, um, California Apartment Association, people like that, that, um, will have an opinion and say, hey, and, and, and they might have some insights, say, this city tried to do this and these are the impacts that, that happen. So that we can kind of get, um, not, not that your opinion is not, is not valid, it's very, very appreciated. Um, you know, but we want to engage with, with the stakeholders and people that are.
Absolutely.
Before, you know, and again, some of these things are, you know, I think they're pretty straightforward and think there's something that we can do. But again, if we can get more people engaged and involved.
Agencies.
Yeah, their agencies, it'll be an easier lift.
And if you recall, when you did the moratorium ordinance, you actually had landlords that spoke in favor of that ordinance. And, uh, was something I didn't, uh, also wanted to notice that, uh, there continues to be dialogue and discussion at the state level. So there could be something coming down, you know, within a few weeks or months. And not only for tenants, but also for landlords, uh, there's, I know Senator Rado has some pending legislation to, to help, uh, make some of the landlords whole for, for their losses because they also lost.
Yeah.
And, and in that case, so if that, they're made whole, then it, it kind of puts everybody on status quo and there's no back rent owed and it's, you know, forward thinking instead of looking back. So.
No, no, I agree. So that, that would be my recommendation, just, you know, to give me some time or, I know, I keep looking at staff. Like, okay, so if we can get staff maybe to help me, uh, coordinate something like that and I, I will definitely make myself available. I don't know if we wanted to do, uh, an ad hoc, I don't want, I think it's probably really early for that. Um, but if we can start just engaging with them.
If you conversation.
Yeah, have the conversation to, to get them.
Would you like to make that a motion then?
Yeah, move that, that we do that to move to engage with the stakeholders and with these, uh, options that, uh, Hilda has presented to us.
And others that they may have.
Others that they may have.
Including landlords, not just tenants.
Not just tenants, yeah.
I second that.
Alicia.
Would you take role, please? Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia's absent, motion passes.
Well, alrighty then. Thank you so very much.
And, and when the group meets, if you need any assistance, let me know.
Thank you.
And I'll keep you posted on new things that come up.
Okay, thank you, much appreciated.
Okay, we're going into, um, section F, council member reports, announcement, future agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and the council members to make brief reports on boards, committees and other public agencies and at public events. To request updates, to initiate future agenda items and to take action of matters. Initiate under the section of the agenda, under the section of council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet the requirements for action. Councilmember Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have a few things. First, I'd like to highlight, um, some activities that happened in the last few weeks with our parks and our PD. We had, um, a grant that was written by Jennifer, who did an excellent job, Stickman, on bringing money to our community for car seats and helmets. And so with the help of PD, they were able to retrofit quite a few car seats that were needed. A story I want to share with you, a grandmother had to take custody of her grandchildren, five. Um, CPS handed them over and she had car seats that were just like bought it at Goodwill's yard sales. They were not safe for the children and she basically left crying because they were all now safe in her car. And because of this great program, and I did share that with Jennifer for all her help. Uh, I did attend the fair camp that we are partners with. Uh, the kids had a great time, they do a great program. I think our parks, uh, members that were out there also doing that program as partnerships. And we have our mad kid camp coming with our PD next week, if you can stop by there to say hi. And then we had, um, a, a leak, several leaks in the city. Going to help are our culture partners here in the city and the county of Madera. And with that, I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So Montes.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out to staff. I've been, I've been bugging you guys a little bit more lately. Um, I think it's Keith, Gary and Joseph in particular. Um, I do appreciate all your time and all, all your staff's time, um, in making sure that our residents' issues are being heard. I, I really do appreciate it. I know we've had a lot of congratulations around, uh, every, all day today for, for everybody. But, um, that's just a special shout out to you guys for me for this last couple of weeks and I will continue to bug you. So I apologize in advance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Mejia?
Um, yeah, last Sunday, not this past Sunday, but the last Sunday, Councilmember Montes and I had the pleasure of watching, um, at the Madera Soccer League, we, we were invited, so we were out there, uh, just watching the leagues and, um, we also had the opportunity to see the Cholos Quintles de Tijuana that came to, uh, play here in Madera. Unfortunately, Madera did not win, but they had the opportunity to play with athletes that may become, um, national, international. So that was great to watch. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. And I'll ask, uh, Councilmember Mejia, she can repeat, what was the name of the, the soccer group?
Cholos Quintles de Tijuana.
Okay. Does that sound familiar? There you go. Okay, well, good. Well, it was good. It was good to see that they came here to Madera and, and they got a opportunity to expose themselves to other athletes around there. Um, our, our sport arena itself. But anyhow, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, uh, to the Madera Parks and Rec, uh, this, uh, this Monday, we had an opportunity to, um, be part of the, uh, Fourth of July golf tournament. I wanted to thank Joseph, uh, Olga, Adam Romero, uh, for putting the event. I know the turnout wasn't as expected, but the, uh, the event was quite fun. Uh, we, we ended up in third place, we, we had a good time out there. Hopefully, uh, next year I get to see more of the city staff and possibly my colleagues out here participating in the tournament, I think it'd be a great, um, way to show not only, I, 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 I think we all had, um, our, our day planned, but I think, you know, it'd be great to see you guys in the morning there. It's a, it's, it, it was, um, it was a, the turnout wasn't as expected, but I know Joseph took the initiative to, to make this a better tournament and a better turnout as it was in the previous years. Um, but I, I hope to see that turnout better and I, I hope to see my colleagues there. Um, I also wanted to ask a question, uh, to our chief of police. I know that, uh, DJ had brought up a point in regards to, uh, a possible ordinance with fireworks. But if, if, if you could, you know, without really getting into a discussion, would you be able to, to speak on behalf of, of how something like that, uh, would that put additional stress to your department? Uh, would, would you see, uh, that ordinance, uh, just another ordinance with, without teeth? Or how, how would you, how would the department be able to enforce something like that? Because I know you guys already give citations and you guys are out there patrolling. But, um, if, if it's something that of, of interest to the, to my colleagues and it maybe it's a future agenda item. But for now, would you be able to speak on that? Please, Chief. And I say that because I think all of you did notice that there was kinda like a war zone out there. I mean, I, I, every year, my kids get on top of the, the patio in the backyard and, and they love watching them because it's just around the neighborhood. It's, it's, you know, but I don't know that that's, that's good for, for a lot of neighbors and especially seniors that might have issues or any veterans or even animal, uh, folks, you know, but it, it's, it's, it's hard to control that. So that's why I'm, I'm posing the question, is that something that, that we, we should consider?
Well, of course, that's, that is certainly always up to the council. Uh, what, what I can say is every Fourth of July, we have added officers, uh, out on patrol. Uh, this year we had twenty. Um, and as, uh, Chief Watson had alluded to earlier, um, all they are is their fire, uh, work seeking officers. That's all they do for the whole night. We issued twenty-one citations under the current law. Um, so there's no shortage of identifying people lighting them. Um, if you wanted to go down that road, uh, you can. Um, not necessarily opposed to that, I don't know if it would be any more effective than what we have now. Um, the, the difference is, is that, um, you, if there's an illegal firework that set off, you, you just go and you cite the property owner. The property owner is responsible for it, but you're still gonna come across, uh, w- was that a neighbor that was in front of my house that I set out? So we actually do line a site. We actually watch, we set up and we watch them light it. And then we go and issue the site to the individual. They may not live there, but it's the person actually lighting it. So it, again, it just depends on what you want to do. Uh, this is a problem everywhere. Um, and no matter what you pass or what we try to do, we're, we're not going to solve. Um, and, and you could, you could give me, uh, a hundred additional personnel on the Fourth of July and it's still going to occur. Um, you know, th- this isn't something, um, it, it has gotten better over the years, but it's not something that's gonna go away. And, uh, we're, we're, I, I understand completely, we're talking big mortars, big fireworks. Um, but we do do the best that we can. Um, and talking with my, uh, counterparts and other jurisdictions, other chiefs, it's, it's even worse. Um, and they have a, a plethora of ordinances and everything in place too. Uh, and even Fresno, Fresno County, I said close, they have helicopters up in the air that, and drones and everything that identify and, and they're still, we still arrested more people than they did. Uh, and as alluded to earlier too, even with, uh, Fresno having the ordinance, they still had three homes that burned down. We didn't have any. So it just depends on what you want to do.
Thank you. Appreciate your, your, your honest feedback. I think it, it gives us a sense of what direction we can take as a, as a collective body here. Uh, but I, I know you and your, 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 your staff do a great job alongside, uh, fire. You guys are pretty busy and, you know, I think that's why the Fourth of July, you know, we wanted to celebrate that to make sure that we bring more folks together, uh, in a one central location to avoid, um, you know, just the illicit fireworks going up in the air. But I do appreciate your, your, your feedback. Thank you, Chief.
Well, thank you. And, and that was one of the, the issues that we really were behind and hoping that, that that did, uh, come to fruition, was to actually have the firework event. Because the more people you load into that stadium, unless you're gonna have light and fireworks in your city. So I do, next year, I believe it's gonna be even less fireworks in the city and we'll take care.
Very good.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember, um, Vegas?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, I have something to tell the, uh, on Monday, June twenty-seventh, uh, Madera County, uh, Art Authority, we have, uh, we, uh, approve, uh, the last logo for the, they're gonna be on, uh, they're gonna be MCAA logo, uh, representing the, the Madera County Art Authority and, and we have that, we have, uh, the big sign is gonna be on, on top of the building. So we need, uh, we only need to come out and look for the place where the building is gonna be built. So, uh, this is a very nice, uh, building that we're expecting to see in the future. And, uh, so we just, uh, wanna let you guys know that we have those, the, the, the big sign on top of the building, the, the sign is gonna be, be visible to the public, so. And, uh, I hope to let, uh, we can find a place to build up the building. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much. And as for myself, I would like to just say each one of my colleagues, it is so great to work with you. You see meetings from other cities and it's hurtful. But to be able to sit here with each one of you and to be able to be cordial. And I believe that we love each other, you know? I, I thank you to the city staff, to Mama Bear sitting right there, Alicia. Thank you, sweetie. Arnaldo, thank you. Chief, thank you. To all of you that sit on Zoom right now. You guys are very special, you, you work very hard. To all those that were out there in the riverbed. I live in the meadows and I just want you to know that you guys are really keeping us safe. All the bushes and things that have been chopped down. You know, the, the ride from the chief Watson, that was, that was really cool. That was cool. To the mayor, if you're watching, I send my prayers to you, I pray that you get better. And there's a flu going around, I hear you guys, that needs to be watched because it's, it's no joke and, and it's influenza A. And just, you know, take care of yourselves. God bless each and every one of you. I send my love to you. And I truly enjoyed myself tonight. I see, I know, hey, our, our meetings with me are may not just be protocol, but you know what? God knows our heart and that's the main thing, so. Councilwoman Gallegos?
Yes, I just wanted to say something real fast. Um, on behalf of, uh, our mayor that's not here and Councilman Rodriguez, I just wanted to mention that I'd like to thank the staff, especially, uh, Arnaldo, Chief Watson, uh, Chief, Watson. And I think Dan was part of it and a couple of the people about pulling together, um, with the Kiwanis, trying to make sure our community knew that we weren't gonna have fireworks. That was a, uh, I mean, they did everything in their power trying to find another firework vendor for this community. I mean, day and night, they were on those lines trying to find somebody. So on behalf of Kiwanis, please thank them, Jose and Mayor, if you're online, um, that our staff did so diligently trying to get that happening here in our community on Fourth of July. And I know it was a lot of pulling hair, gray hairs probably came from it, um, but we'll be there next year. So I'd like to thank that service club for stepping up.
Very good. Hilda, you were included in that. Please forgive me. Thank you so much. And at this time, we will say farewell. God bless, Godspeed. And it is eight thirty and good night. Meeting adjourned. I just wanted to do that.